Well, that sounds fine.
All right, well, it is, I'll give you a quick minute and then we'll. At least are we good at buying?
Uh, yeah, let me, um. Oh, no, it's recording, it's recording, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this work session for the Tiger Twelve Tim School Board of Directors. I will start this session at five thirty one P M. And today, for this work session, the purpose is really to start to just think about and outline a plan for the process for the new superintendent. Um, and in, and I think there's, so there's a lot to consider, and also, I think, a couple different ways to go. And we have, I was not on the board at the time, but I was on another board and was sort of helping with the last superintendent search, but we have Director Search Meet who was a part of two, at least two. Yes, and so we have some institutional knowledge there in terms of process and kind of just also thinking about our community now, and it's been several years and sort of what we, um, what we know is important for our community members and sort of how and a lot of the engagement processes that we already have in place for other things that we do and how we kind of can build that into this process as well. We also have Vince from OSBA joining us, and so in terms of policy questions, sort of how does maybe strategize our thinking around this? And he is available as well as Kristen, of course, Director Miles, because she's also really well versed in a lot of that as well. And so I'm happy to have, thank you, Vince, for being here. Um, just to have another sort of outside, but really, really well-versed voice in the room as we kind of go through this. And so maybe one, and again, I don't think this needs to look the same as what has been done in the past, but I think sometimes hearing how it was done, especially this last time, might be a good place to start unless there are other things that.
We might want to start with just getting the legal requirements that, so if we can get Vince to just give us the outline of these are the things you have to do first before you can do X, Y, Z. I know there's a process where, so if Vince could explain all that.
Yeah, happy to do that. Well, thank you for having me and I'm happy to support. So yeah, that is a really good question. And so you're, it, I would reference you to your policy CBB, which is recruitment and appointment of the superintendent. Um, it's not a very large policy, but it does lay out in broad terms what the board is required to do. You know, the first, first step is always declaring the vacancy. That's something that the board does by vote. I don't know if the board has done that at this point, but uh, you would declare a vacancy at a future date. It would probably be June thirtieth of this year. Um, and then the next piece is that you would adopt some sort of process and really that entails a calendar. What are the actions that we're going to take on what dates and when are we going to make a decision? Uh, just so we can be clear, so all the, all board members are clear and that the public is clear on the process that the board is going to take to select the, the superintendent. The next is, uh, you're required to take public comment on the qualities and qualifications of the, of the superintendent. In an interim situation, you are within your rights to just use your policy CBA, which is the duties and qualifications of the superintendent and use that as the, as the qualifications. So, but alternatively, you could go out and, and survey or do focus groups, but, um, you know, you're not very late in the year, but it's time is of the essence to have that stability and be ready uh, to go into next year. And then you take that public comment and then you ultimately will approve those qualities and qualifications. If it's your policy CBA, you just approve policy CBA as your qualities and qualifications. And that's the criteria that you use to review any candidates that the board would consider. At that point, you know, it's really up to the board on the logistics of how you want to do this. You can do a search process. You can create a position announcement. We could market it, um, or you could hire a consultant to market it and put it out there and see who you get. Uh, you can also informally, uh, you know, seek out candidates and then, uh, collect their application materials and then as a group review them. Um, once you've met those, those four uh, actions that I described, declaring the vacancy, adopting a process, taking public comment on the qualities and qualifications, and then adopting the qualities and qualifications, that allows the board to go into executive session. So when you're considering candidates, that's a time when you want to be confidential. You want to keep the identity of these candidates private, and so that's why we go into a executive session to do that. So then you review application materials. Um, ultimately, you're going to have a process where you're going to, uh, decide, um, who your top candidate is, and then you'll enter into negotiations. And, uh, if those negotiations are favorable, then you can go ahead and extend them a contract. The board then ratifies that contract and you're set to go for the next school year.
So simple, like just like that. Okay, that's very helpful.
Um, okay, so I just want to clarify, Vince, if we decide we're going to do an interim and we're then going to have to do a search for a long term suit, we have to do the same process for both of those.
There, essentially, there is, the interim search process is much, is definitely abbreviated. You can do that with a consultant or you can do that on your own. It's really up to you how you want to handle that. The extended whole search process, I strongly recommend you, you retain a, a search service to do that.
And then one more clarification on that, if we sort of went these sort of two pathways at the same time in terms of sort of like a, an interim, maybe in the shorter term while we do the full search, what is the process for appointing that interim versus doing the interim search?
So, uh, the, the search process is really just the, the process of identifying who the candidates are. And then the, the actual appointment is extending the, the contract. If the candidate, you will sign the contract and then you extend them a contract for one year. It's interim, it's interim contract, so it's you, it's, it's in text on there that it is for one year and that's it, and that's the, the intent there.
So the declaring of the vacancy, the qualifications, um, adopting, adopting process and the public comment process, those are the same for both processes and we could do it together as one process and then branch, spin them off later? Or do we have to start each one of them individually?
No, those are two separate processes. The, oftentimes they're connected under the same contract. If you retain a search firm to do that work, uh, sometimes, uh, search firms will extend you, uh, the interim search for free if you, they, if you give them a contract for the full search. Um, so it really does vary. Uh, but no, they're separate processes. So the one that you're doing now will be distinct from what you do in the fall, so probably starting in October. Where you'll again, that's when you'll want to go out and survey for your, the qualities and qualifications of your new superintendent. You might want to do some focus groups, get some community input, bring that in and then, and then approve those qualities and qualifications, create those marketing materials, and it's a much, it's a more protracted process.
So like this process first for July until whenever.
So I think, yeah, so I think our we're in this funny sort of i- i- in between with the timeline. So I think either where, either way we're sort of doing, we can do those first four steps. We can declare, we can adopt the process, we can have the public comments and then adopt those qualities and qualifications and then, but I think tandem to that, like that would be regardless. So I guess maybe the bigger question is, if we know, and I don't, I'm not saying this is the case, but in theory, if we believe that we will be appointing an interim, we would do this process, these four steps, and then have an interim and then do that, those four steps again, even though we've already declared a vacancy and then church firm and.
I'm confusing you because I, I made, I made an assumption that you were going to go out for an interim superintendent. Uh, that isn't necessary, you don't necessarily have to do that. Um, I would recommend against, uh, doing a permanent search process this late in the season because I don't think that, uh, the applicant pool would be deep or as wide enough as you would, you would like. So my recommendation is that you do an interim, an interim process here this spring. Go ahead and get someone for a contract that would start on July first and end on June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. And then go out in October of twenty twenty four, this coming fall for a full search and full national, national search. Now, I, I'm sorry, I, I was making the assumption that that was what the board wanted to do, but that's, you could do a full search in, in that situation. You do your qualities and qualification, you, we would do a all, we would just do it one time, essentially.
Okay. No, that's helpful, and I think we likely, for all the reasons we've all outlined, go that direction, but since we're kind of sitting here for this first time, just kind of wanting to sort of what are those options, right? And so we have that option if, if folks wanted to, to do a full search now, although, so I just was kind of asking all the sort of choose your own adventure questions of, of, right, like which ways could go, but I think, um, I think there's a lot of truth and wisdom around really considering that, um, that interim piece.
Yeah, last time we looked for a soup, we started in December and it felt really rushed to find a superintendent for July first. So if we're starting middle of March. I wouldn't want to be the board president that's leading the process to get us into.
I hear you. Okay.
So Vince, just to clarify, what you're saying is, you know, if we want to do any part of the interim um, piece, even appointment in executive session, we're still doing those for.
Correct.
Okay.
So I, I actually mocked up a search, an interim search calendar, if you would, I don't know how big the, of a screen I'm on. Am I on?
On a laptop. Hang on, we can throw you up on that, we can throw you on the TV.
Throw me up on the TV, I'll, I'll show you this document and then we can walk through this process and maybe it'll help, help us understand a little bit better. And of course, the dates are my best guess. I mean, I'm just considering where, where you're at today. And I looked at your, your calendar, your meeting calendar and kind of mocked up some dates, but this could definitely be adjusted.
You're almost on the Jumbotron, but not yet. Okay.
And then I need screen sharing permission. Sorry.
The recording in this meeting is going to be.
I've got it. Okay, coming at you here. So you should be seeing, uh, right there, you should be seeing a screen, uh, page, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, this is just a, a template search calendar. So today's March fourth, I mean, you're in a meeting, uh, there's a quorum of the board, so you could declare the vacancy, um, and approve a search process, search calendar, but so that, so.
Question is, we can't do that tonight.
I don't do that the eleven. But I could do that, we could do that on Monday.
We could do it Monday.
Yeah, you can just punt these, these dates out. So I'm, this, like I said, these, these dates are just placeholders. So yeah, declaring the vacancy and approving a calendar, just getting that established. Um, and then, uh, the next piece, I've trimmed out all the, all the extra steps because, for a full search. Um, so next is qualifications phase. You need to, uh, take public comment on the qualities and qualifications and to discuss, the, discuss and adopt the desired qual- qualities and qualifications under policy CBA. You'll want to think about salary range as well. You know, you'll want to think about contract parameters. I should probably put that in there. Contract parameters. So how much are you going to compensate, uh, an interim superintendent? So considering that, um, and then, uh, you need to identify how you want to go ahead and, and, and get candidates. You're lucky that you're a fairly prominent school district, so, um, there are probably, uh, folks in retirement that would be willing to, to come out and, and support you. So I don't think that finding candidates is going to be overly difficult for the, for the board. You can do that informally, uh, just asking about, or we also have, we call it the, uh, folder of applicants, but it's really just, it's just a file, it's a, it's a digital folder with application materials. So folks that you can, uh, go through. And, uh, so that's, we can, uh, provide that to you if that would be helpful. So yeah, you're going to go ahead and you're going to decide who you want to, uh, consider. Uh, screen those application materials and select some, you probably should do interviews of some sort, just get a feel for these individuals. Um, so then, um, and I just mocked this up, April eighth, screen, have a meeting to screen and then coming back on, uh, so between the ninth and eighteenth, you know, conducting intern, internet and social media checks on, um, potential interviewees, conduct your interviews and then at your final round of interviews going ahead and selecting a finalist. So essentially you would rank all your candidates, you'd go with your top pick. Um, and then April eighteenth to the twenty first, I gave you a few days over a weekend to negotiate with your top pick. And then I had April twenty second for voting to hire. It sounds like it'll be pushed out a little bit into May, but that's, uh, totally fine. Uh, because that gives them a full, over a month to, to transition into the position. But yeah, you would add an upcoming meeting, you would vote to hire the candidate once they've signed the contract. Um, and then do a press release letting people know, uh, who you'd select. And then, uh, if you'd like, uh, you can work with OSBA to do a transition plan. Um, we do roles and responsibilities and, uh, do operating agreement. Um, and, uh, communication protocols to help ease that transition. Even still a good idea with a, with an interim superintendent, just to set level set for the new leadership team. So, um, so that's just a mock-up of what that would look like. Um, you can add components to this, uh, you can add time to it. You have a little bit of time to, uh, to add to a interim search process.
That's really helpful, Vince. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I can, and I can just send this as a Word document and you guys can edit this up, uh, as you like.
Questions about that?
Yeah, so there's one thing you mentioned, Vince, um, about conducting internet search and social mer- social media search of potential candidates. And I remember the last time we went through this, we were explicitly told not to do that until after we had um, chosen the candidate because there was some possible slander.
No, that's actually.
For the current thinking?
No, that's actually, uh, a part of our, of our process in all our pro, our search processes that before the interviews, we do a little bit of cyber stalking, if you will. Uh, we have board members go out and do a little bit of uh, internet searches, look at the social media accounts, I'll look at newspaper articles, things like that. Look on did the district website, uh, where the individual, well, it's usually, these are individual that are still working for you folks. It'll probably be folks in retirement, so go back to their last position and see what's out there. Um, that's helpful for building, um, uh, interview questions. If there's something there that makes us feel a little uncomfortable or we have questions that arise out of that, allows us to craft those questions ahead of the interview.
And then when we are crafting those questions, do we need to have the same slate of questions for every candidate or can we customize questions for candidates?
Yeah, you can have, um, we try to give equal treatment across all candidates, but if there is a topic that comes up, say, we had, um, um, a superintendent that we really like, looks great on paper, we really love the results they got in their district, but there was this one little thing where they had a little rub with one of their, with one of their board members that makes us want, want to ask a question. So then we craft a question to, to dig into that and let him tell that story. So that would be an example of where we would craft an individual question.
Maybe, yeah.
So, um, are we going to potentially have an agenda item at our next meeting and approve the calendar?
So we couldn't do anything until we had this, so it's like this sort of, yeah, so potentially, yes, so after tonight, because we can't do anything in work session, there is a placeholder for the meeting on Monday to adopt the superintendent search process and then declaring the vacancy. So those, assuming we we work through it enough that I can put something on the agenda for us to vote on. So that's sort of the, and I think I think the one big first question, either way, we're going to probably have two pieces unless the majority decides to scrap an interim plan, but I think the first thing that we kind of need to have some consensus on is what are we doing? Details. Um, and then, then we can really get, and I think that timeline is super helpful, um, in terms of planning that if we went with an interim piece, um, and also then what does that process look like come October when we're doing the full search and we can really start having some broad conversations around that now, how we built like, you know, what that looks like to bring in all the voices and that's what's really helpful about, I think, the past processes, um, that have happened and kind of working with principals and all that, all those pieces will be part of that bigger executive search. And, but I do think we kind of need to just first, um, having heard all of, you know, all the things so far, um, what we're feeling around the interim piece first. Um, in my dreams, I was thinking we could really run both at the same time. Um, I don't, which is like potentially finding a unicorn um, person while also having an interim plan and I'm not, I, I think that's less likely, um, to happen.
Yeah, because the pool of people who want to be interims, as Vince said, tend to be retired superintendents.
Yeah.
Uh, the pool of people who want to be superintendents tend to be especially a district like Tiger Twelve, so they've maybe been a superintendent, they're building their career.
Right, and, and it would almost been two search processes, so, which would have been not possible. Not possible.
Yeah, that's the term.
So, um, so I think maybe just kind of whether we however I do this, kind of go around or just, I mean, I think we just need to get a pulse on you know, what what folks are feeling around sort of like this potential meeting and interim before we do the full, the full search, um, and, and maybe flushing out any other concerns or questions around that piece. I feel like we kind of need to do that first before we can move on to a process.
We can't take a vote on it because we're in a work session, but we can just get an idea so that you then know for next meeting what it is you're gonna put in front of us. Yeah. But we can discuss it because we're in public.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We just can't.
Discuss it.
Yep.
Independently, which is why none of us walking into the room today, Billy, knew what we were going to be doing. Surprise. Um, this is the best, you know, the board is making its sausage in public.
Yeah.
Peace.
Yeah, so I think kind of what are what are people's?
I think conventional system from previous searches like we had said, that, you know, starting in December, still felt kind of rush and um, given the constraints with the applicant pool, giving the constraints of the timing, I think, and at least in my opinion, an interim. Uh, for one year, then starting the search in October for the, for the full, uh, would, would be, would be mine. My decision.
Okay.
Or my, but, I mean.
Thoughts? Who, who's here? I had, just had an idea, um, how unlikely would it be that we'd find somebody who'd want to be interim for six months? Is that, does that ever happen? Like somebody who's, I'm thinking of the, you know, a retiree who's coming back and can only work a half year. Well, if they're retired, then they don't necessarily need to work a whole year. Right, but the, the per is working back a half year thing. Um, I'm just wondering, is, is that ever an option these days? That somebody says, yes, I'd like to be an intern, but I can only be an interim for half a year, and then we're actually looking at a superintendent search that would start what, January first? Does that ever happen?
No, I've never heard of that happening, no.
Alright.
Good, yeah.
What's what you're going to find in January?
Well, that's. Because then that would bring our whole thing back again.
Exactly.
And so we would just want someone who, so that would be like a really important piece of that interview candidate processes, being able to have that full year.
What do you think? Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, if we could, we had magic wands, we would wave them and have a fantastic candidate immediately, but we can't and we need to do a good, solid job, follow the process. We're going to have public meetings to set up, so I think the recommended process sounds good to me, um, we don't really have any other option that's reasonable.
Also true.
Plus it gives the constituents a lot more time to weigh in on, you know, what the criteria is that we should be looking for.
In the long term.
For the long term, yeah.
And actually, I like that idea that if we, we know we're starting the, the interim search and that's this process, then as soon as we've got that person in play, they can then help us as we're going through the superintendent's search and we can in fact start it earlier than just October. So we need to get the search for the search team.
Right, so that was one of my questions. So there's no weird policy timelines around, once we've declared that, like, once we've done those four things, um, and we have appointed, um, an interim, let's say, there's nothing then that stands in our way immediately after having that person in place. We don't have to wait till October, right? Like, we can, we can start working on, working on all the things before that.
Absolutely.
Okay, that was one of my.
The pool is at its deepest in October. The superintendent pool will be at its deepest, and so that's really when we want to make sure we've got our advertisement.
All the ducks in a row.
All the ducks in a row. So we have a good long time to do the search team RFP process and get them up to speed on who we are, what we're looking for.
Um, and that'll give us a lot of time to work with building administrators, the constituents, like you said, like all, like getting all those sort of engagement pieces, a lot of time, a lot of headway. Um, because I do think, and this is farther down the line, but I, in, in terms of process, but I, I really think sort of um, delegating slash employing those building administrators to like really sort of have their their representatives of like staff and students and families from each, like, they're really kind of responsible for those that piece that then comes into the broader conversation. So we're getting you know, along with other, like we did with in two thousand seventeen, right, eighteen?
Yeah.
Um, you know, the foundation was a part of that, the, um, having all those those groups, I think that gives us. those groups, I think that gives us, then we're not feeling like a really, like we have this really long runway for that part, which is nice and really getting things planned out.
Because I mean, one of the things that I want officially on record is, you know, the board has three roles, right? Policy, budget, and superintendent. And we always talk about how, you know, policy is really where the meter works. I'm sorry, but hiring the superintendent, hiring the right superintendent is the most important job we want to do.
Yeah.
And so if we get this wrong, it's bad for students, it's bad for staff, and it's bad for the community. And so we need to do everything we can to make sure everything is right.
Yep.
And that means going slow and strong.
Yep, I agree.
And not rushing.
So it sounds like we want the criteria ready and the search team in place by October so that we can
I think we could have that done by the end of the school year, really.
Well, not what we can do, but like we definitely have it. We need because we need to have it advertised.
Yeah, right.
And so, um, once we're able to officially vote on taking actions, we'll get that moving. Who literally drafts the criteria typically?
For the search term or for the quality, the, for the, for what?
For the hiring criteria.
Like qualification and qualities. So what we've done in the past is we, we have to take public comment. So we're gonna invite the public to come and tell us what they want us to look for. Um, but then that's gonna be something that we as a board talk about, having heard the public comment, what are the important things? Presumably we'll have a draft document, we'll kick it around and finalize it. Does that sound like about the right process to you?
Yeah.
And survey.
Vince, what it, what does OSBA do as far as like when the board is, yeah, you've heard the question.
Yeah, I heard the question. Yeah. So the, the way that we do it, historically, OSBA did surveys and focus groups. Um, and we've kind of gone away from doing focus groups because it's duplicative. That said, process is sometimes as important as the document. So if you feel like you need to do community and staff outreach, focus groups can be very effective in building that, building social capital and building ownership in the process or involvement in the process. Um, but otherwise, we normally just survey. Um, and that's essentially, it's a survey monkey. We give a link to the district staff and then we survey on qualities and qualifications. And it's a basically a really long list and people can choose the qualities and qualifications that they're looking for. They also survey on what's going well in the district and what we want to preserve and what could be going better. And then we take all that, uh, do some qualitative analysis, roll that up, and then we come back with some quality and qualification statements uh that we put in front of the board. So that's our process and how we develop that. But they form the really the, the planks of the, of the marketing material. That's what um candidates look at to foresee themselves, imagine themselves being the superintendent at Tiger 12.
Did we do that in conjunction with policy CBA or aside of?
Good question. So really the process that I just described is the process that we use in a full search. So what you would do in the fall. Um, you know, for an interim search, like you're doing right now, the spring, policy CBA is adequate because really an interim superintendent, their job is to just keep, keep the district running. They're not making major changes to what's going on. That said, your district is in a somewhat different situation in that you guys have been working through some hard stuff in the recent months and you don't wanna lose momentum on that work. So the candidate that you're looking at, you need to keep that lens up as you're considering your, your candidates. You need to have someone that can make sure that the work that you're doing around school safety continues.
Awesome.
But all of that would encompass and CBA, right? I mean, they're
You can, you can still do that with the policy CBA.
Yeah.
I wanna circle back to this.
Yeah, I was gonna Director Miles, if you had your thoughts.
Yeah, interim for sure. I don't, I mean, those folks who are um looking for or had looked for a permanent superintendency have found it by now. I mean, just what we know of the search season, they've if they haven't found it by now, you know, we want our pool to be as deep and as wide as, as possible. Um, so I, I would be in favor of an interim. Absolutely. Okay.
Sorry, cut off.
Oh, I'm not sure if you did, but I think I was thinking about, um. I'm, I'm not sure. Something about the interim.
And then Vince, can you walk us through, do we still have the two paths? Once we've decided, once we've done these four, we have the, so the public path and the private path for how we go about hiring a soup. Is that correct?
Are you talking about a, a closed or a semi-open search? Confidentiality? Yeah. So I mean, there's, there, there's two paths. Now, OSBA, we typically do a semi-closed search, which is we maintain the confidentiality of the applicants up until the finalist phase. So you typically, it's usually three candidates. So when the, the board identifies who their top, their finalists are that they're gonna bring into the district, then we typically go public with those names. Um, and community can engage with those folks. We design our finalist forums so that community can be involved. So when we do, when we have folks, we have, I literally have a community forum where people can ask questions of the candidates. We want parents and family and folks, you know, community stakeholders in the room asking those questions. Another option though, is to do a fully confidential search. And that's a process where the file that the, the, you disclose who you, who the new superintendent will be. The candidates are all there, are always kept confidential. And the reason that we do that is you may have access to candidates that um, uh, maybe more higher profile, uh, deeper experience. Um, and don't want to compromise the relationship that they have with their current district. So that's the trade off. The trade off is in a fully confidential search, you don't get as much community engagement. You, you still can have, you will still have a community panel, but we're talking about fifteen, eighteen people that are gonna interact with the, with the finalists. It's not gonna be your whole community. So it's a little bit different. You're very limited exposure to your staff. Whereas with a semi-open um or semi-confidential, like we typically do, there's lots of engagement with staff. There's lots of engagement with kids, lots of engagement, community.
And we need to declare whether we're doing that semi-closed or completely confidential at the out, outs, outset of the process?
Yes, when, when you approve, when you approve your qualities and qualifications, um, that's when you make that decision is because it goes into the marketing materials. Because you need to signal to potential applicants that if you're gonna do a fully confidential process, the applicants need to know that.
And I can't remember what we did last time. I have a few, do you have any recollection? Was it fully confidential last time? I cannot remember.
I mean, I think it's something you're a high enough profile district that I think it's something that you should seriously consider for your, for your full search. Of course, there's trade offs. And so, you know, the lack of community engagement and staff engagement is a trade off, but it may pay off in the quality, the depth of your applicant pool.
Because at that point, what we're hoping for, well, just, just theoretically, we're hoping to possibly poach a superintendent for a neighboring district without them knowing, without their district knowing that they're in the process of maybe being poached.
Yeah, it may not be a neighboring district. It may be, um, you, you will, you will draw people from all over the United States.
So then the other consideration, if we did, so that's really, that's interesting information to know. And so then, when it comes to, because we have built, um, uh, I think we've built um a way of doing sort of like family district business of being very much engaged um or opportunities for engagement. We would really then need to front load that on the qualities and qualification side of things, a whole bunch more. Um, and really get down to brass tacks, what those, you know, and making sure if, if we had to do it in the full, fully closed confidential search, that folks were really comfortable with what was on that. Yeah. The, the Q and Q documents, um, so that there was it felt like, even though we can't be transparent, there's transparency in what we have been told to look for. And then, um, and sort of what those priorities are for our constituents.
And you need to be very careful of who the fifteen to eighteen people that Vince mentioned are and that they're well-trained in understanding what confidentiality looks like so that they're not spilling the beans, you know? And also, um, will, will work to stay true to the vision that was established during the Q and Q process. That's a really important, so you've got to be really, I think, thoughtful about who's on that team.
Yeah.
If we do it close. If we do a confidential process, yeah. So it's, I think the decision, I think there is, how much do we trust? Our reputation as a district is gonna draw in great candidates and so we can be semi-closed. And or do we wanna go more fully confidential with the assumption that we'll probably get better candidates?
And I'm looking at last time's stuff and I think it was
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure we worked fully confidential, the more I think about it, yeah. So I'm starting to, oh yeah, remember. I mean, it's not as nice a process to tell the public, we're gonna do this confidentially, but it is better for the applicants. And like I said, the quality of the candidate you can get can be significantly better.
And you still have, again, there still is that fifteen to eighteen people from the community that are a part of that. It's just not our full if we did it that way, not our full community process.
Yeah.
And maybe we, you know, maybe we craft some questions on that initial survey too, sort of around again, part of transparency, it's, you know, and, and really educating folks on the why, like, we wanna get the most best candidates possible. And here's what third party people are saying and experiences said. And what would then, what would this process look like to make it feel
Right.
Okay.
And that I think is gonna be a really important component to have in our RSP for the search team.
Yeah.
So that they, so that we can tell them, this is the process that we wanna go through. But maybe we don't and have them saying, here are your real pros and cons. And based on our experience as a search team, this is what we think in their position we would do.
And that's nice because we have some, like, that's one decision they have to do, right?
Right, and that's exactly. But it's
And that's true.
Everybody to have twisted in their brains and it's a tough one.
But if you, if you put it in on the survey, have people tell us whether they want a semi-close, I know it's hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we give them a voice early and say, do you feel like we need something that is closed or semi-close, right? So that that way, we're not doing it on our own. We're opening it up to the public because I know that Sam Kaiser did that. They did a um, a private search, right? And, you know, even when they selected, who they selected, right, who was a prominent candidate, it just felt odd to me. Um, it just felt very, uh, like they left their constituents out and I wouldn't wanna do that here. So that's what I'm saying, like, as long as we give ample uh time for people to lean in.
Yeah. Well, and again, I think these are good things to start mulling around. And, you know, and maybe it would, you know, really having everything ready to hit the ground March or October first, we can, maybe we just assume we do it semi-closed and we're gonna be, you know, picking when the whatever's good. And so we'll have an, yeah, like, I think that's just, you have to make that decision and hope that you made the right ones, because there's pros and cons of both.
Yeah.
But um, I think if, if everything pointed to, because I would feel the same way, like, who was in, as you know, Hamilton said, like, who's in the room where it happened? Like, who is there? And it's never gonna feel right or, or good.
You're back. And you're, you're recording. That's not the right one. Okay. All right. Um, we will now reconvene this work session of the Tiger 12 School Board at six twenty-five. Yeah. Thank you for patience. Um, for our folks behind this as well as each other while we got our technical difficulties figured out. Um, and so we essentially, well, maybe that was a good pause to kind of come back. Um, so I think what I am hearing is that, um, and I want people to say no, if that's not the case. But I think the first thing that I wanna make sure that we are clear on at this point is that the, the consensus is that we will be first engaging in a interim process. Is that where people are, are leaning at this point? Right now, we can't vote, but just sort of in, in the sense of feeling comfortable with that as the first step of this process.
Yeah.
Um, and so for the, for Monday's meeting, I will declare the vacancy. Um, and then I think the pro, so then I guess what we need to do if we need to adopt a process is, and maybe we use what Vince will send out is, um, and I can kind of work with the, the dates on that a little bit, um, and have something ready around the interim process for Monday.
Just as far as, as dates, um, so those of us that work nights have a hard time, you know, canceling things. Or, so I'm wondering if we can have, make sure that we have a discussion about dates that we're gonna meet before we drop them on calendars.
Yes.
Thank you.
And something, something we talked about on Monday's meeting is, is calendar dates.
You know, we can discuss the other dates. There's some other changes to the dates. Wouldn't we then have like for the budget maybe?
I think we've announced this meeting and it's talking about superintendent stuff.
But dates that board members would be a bit more superintendent switch and they can inform us.
So maybe if, is
And then we would decide those.
Yeah, so maybe could we then send out that sort of template that Vince created? And kind of seeing like what the timeframes essentially are like two weeks here, two weeks there. Some of them might be virtual, that's easier, you know, like for some of these quick just for, I mean, some of these are not the big process ones, but the, we need to make a decision kind of ones. Um, that could be an option two. Um, so I can have a calendar and, and I suppose, well, no, I don't want it's like
Let me send you there.
No, no. Um,
You don't want that.
And I'll give some ranges in there and then maybe what we can do is like, you know, this is roughly the week, what days work. Kind of going off of what Vince had. Okay, that sounds good. Okay. Um, and then, so and then part of that calendar that we will look at, we'll have that public comment on qualities and qualifications on there. And then when we would adopt those based on, after we've heard public comments, so those parts of the process, we don't need to discuss now.
Um, sorry, are you talking about for interim?
For, yeah, just for, no, just for interim.
So we'll talk about the qualifications. And we'll, I'll have all the comments.
So what Vince was starting on is that we adopt the policy CBA as far
Interim.
Okay. Can you, we do have to take public comment. We can do that at the next meeting. And then we adopt the final decision. Is that correct, Vince?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, I don't know.
But no, it's fine, fair enough.
So I'm not giving an opinion yet, but
So I'm not giving an opinion, but I think, um, I'm not sure, given this was existing and before, that this is an old thing, and so maybe.
It's our current policy, yeah.
Right, but we didn't just talk about it, and so I'm wondering if we might want to think about adding something around, um, able to implement the policy we just did, because we're in a little bit of a unique situation with adopting the, um, like, we're changing our, our student discipline policy right now. So it might make sense to add, I don't know if there's anything here that speaks to that, so we might want to add it.
Yeah, and so maybe let's just all, kind of now that we have a frame of reference for like, what the process is, we've sort of determined that we're going to go the interim route, let's, you know, between now and Monday, huh? Ish, we, we have, you're right, we have discussed that we are thinking about doing, um, the interim route. Um, now we have, you know, between now and Monday, to really look through that now, knowing through the lens of this would potentially be the qualities and qualifications for this interim, and then, you know, then, then we can, and we can hear public comment on that, and then we can certainly adopt it or amend it. Not on Monday, all of that, I'm just saying, when we get to that piece.
Yeah.
Because I think the only two pieces of these, the four steps that we'll do on Monday is declare vacancy and adopt the process. Yep, and then, oh, no.
I was just going to ask Vince, is there a typical language for declaring a vacancy?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, I declare, I move that the board declare vacancy, uh, in the office of the superintendent, effective at whatever date.
Okay.
It's not complex.
I bet we could steal that from the agenda.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then, so then do we, I'm just trying to get my timeline in my brain straight, so really, I think then we sort of work, because we know this process will need to be done by, obviously, I'm just going to say June thirtieth, but we, why not, I'm saying.
Completed.
Completed, but, yes, so then, I'm just trying to think when we want to, and this is not something we have to come up with right now, but really, when, I can work with Director Moore to have those RFPs sort of ready to, like, sort of what those next steps are when we're thinking for the longer-term search, that we have all of those steps in a row, so we know, you know, who, like, when we want to start looking for the search firm, and when we want to, so kind of like that next sort of chunk of the puzzle. Um, but I feel like we can run this whole process, so my thinking was, we can run this whole process first, get our interim in place.
Except if we're going to do, we might want a search firm in place to help us with the interim process. And so in that case, we want to start the RFP for this suit, now because Vince mentioned, many search teams will give you, we'll do the many superintendent search, but we'll give you the interim search for free. We want to take advantage of that.
I think, I suggest that we have one unified timeline that has the elements for all.
I'm sorry, I, I don't think that would be.
I love that idea, but it's not realistic in a racial report, that's why I laugh, I'm sorry.
What?
Because when we had a very tight timeline set up last night, we did this, three months into the process, we had to throw out the timeline and redo it, because we couldn't find the candidate to fit the position.
So maybe.
You have to be able to kind of, so the idea that we could plan out a timeline that goes a year and a half, where.
But maybe I could add, so maybe, because I think there's, there's too many unknowns, but maybe I could, I could put some like milestones on there, like.
Right.
By July one.
Right.
This, October first, we're ready with marketing materials, you know, in this couple of months, two board members will be meeting to look through the RFP proposed, like, the, the firms that we get back. So I can kind of.
It's going to get confusing to talk about, it's already annoying talking about a timeline, because we're not being.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
One, and then with the RFP is the same.
Right.
It might avoid confusion, but doesn't mean we have to hold the dates of these.
Yeah, so we could run the RFP for both, and I will, and I have, I've talked, um, with Director Moore a little bit, and so I can probably, we can't do anything with that to give an adopted process, and so, but I could have that ready. I can have that ready to draft, essentially, like, I can work on it, and the only one that sort of talked, like, seen, and talked to anybody else about it. Um, and so I could have that sort of ready to send out if and when we adopt the process on Monday.
So would say something like, have interim qualifications, RFP, permit superintendent search qualification, and stuff like that.
I would just, I, I would look at what he sent me, and then probably work with people that know more about that part, to kind of determine how you need to work that when it was proposed. Mainly, I mean, mainly what we want is the executive search, and then like, also moving on, you know, going to go for those. Type hole, work on that, and see, and for some reason it feels like I'll, I'll try to kind of get there.
Just ask, make sure it says it's permanent or.
Okay, yeah.
Not sure that I can ask this without violating the law, but how would going, would going with OSBA, like, with that, for interim, would that cost? Would that?
You can get information, you can ask that.
With OSBA, like, you know, how much would OSBA charge to, um, just do the interim before we select a hiring firm to do the full search?
So we do offer, it's a discounted rate for interim searches, so, uh, yeah, I would have to pull that up. I don't know your, your enrollment, I didn't come prepared, I didn't come prepared to pitch, uh, a deal. I was, I'm just here at your state association consulting.
Um.
No, I think so. I mean, if you're going to do an RFP for the interim search, and that is certainly an often forward, uh, to bring a consultant alongside, um, you know, and have them, uh, you know, do, do the search, market the position, then, I mean, that's really what you're buying, is the marketing. Uh, if you feel that you need to market your position, then, yeah, hiring a, a search consultant is, is a smart move. If you feel that you're going to be able to access candidates without marketing the position, uh, very broadly, then, um, then you could save some money and some time, um, uh, in just obviating the, the RFP process and just kind of doing it on your own. If you choose to go kind of on your own, um, I'm happy to walk alongside the board, um, and support you if you have questions. Um, we also have, yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's really up to you how much effort you want to, and how much marketing you think you really need.
Does COSA also have a list of retired suits? You said OSBA does.
Yes, they do. Yes, and they'll help, and they'll help you find people as well. So there's a lot of resources to find interims, so, yeah, I mean, I would say it's definitely possible for you to find an interim superintendent on your own, if that's what you'd like to do. It does mean a little more work on the part of the board, though. Because you, you're going to have to go and call people, you're going to have to identify people, call them, and, you know, engage with them. Whereas if you bring a search consultant alongside, then you're marketing, and then you're doing an application process. Um, it'll be much, it'll be similar to a full process, but much more abbreviated. And you might get some folks, well, probably not out of state, but it'll be much broader.
So I hear that a retired superintendent is an option, but what other kind of situations, I mean, is there potential to have someone that hasn't been superintendent, or that's earlier in their career as another alternative?
In my opinion, I don't know if we would want somebody early, that's progressive and trained, because we want them to be, or to know how to run a district already. I mean, anybody that turned in their career and was like, well, no, I haven't run a district, I'm just saying, somebody affected, that would just take a position for a year.
The last time we had this situation, we hired an interim, and, um, hired the interim. Yeah. Never mind. But you hired an interim. But, I mean, part of the thing we need to think about is, do we have an internal candidate? Somebody who knows the district very well, but obviously isn't superintendent right now. It might be some other former administrator, not district.
Which is what a lot of districts.
Right, and like, that's, yeah. A lot of those have done that, yeah. Um, then we, the only thing we, we need to tease out is, um, does that person have a superintendent's license? And I don't know what the, I can't remember what the law is about, do they have to have a superintendent license in order to be an interim? Or can they have just an administrator's license?
Yes, they do need to be licensed.
As an administrator or as a superintendent?
As a superintendent, yes, they need to be a licensed superintendent, but I mean, that is not a barrier typically, I mean, uh, they can usually get a provisional license if they need.
Okay, and that's something that we did do in the past, we had, um, somebody who did not have an administrator license, but not superintendent, might, we hired them, and part of the, of the car most for them keeping the job was you will get your superintendent's license by this date.
And then in theory, because we're just theorizing, um, if we found, right, we, whether we did a full search for an interim, like with a firm, or just on our own, and we found someone that was not internal, but another superintendent for whatever reason, as the interim, is there that option of, like, it kind of ends up being a redshirt year? Because, wow, they're working really well, and we would extend them a con, you know, like, the, the official position, or?
Well, that is.
Yes, you certainly. Yeah.
Why?
Yes, you can.
Right, I know, I just have some clarification about, particularly when it's just contracted, how that contract from. Yeah, it's just a question, but I agree. Um, okay, I'm just, I want to get all the information before we. Any more questions? Any other things you want to?
So, running through exactly what we're going to talk about on Monday.
My understanding is that I will, will put on the, um, action items to declare a vacancy, and I will, once getting from Vince the version of the, the template of the calendar, I will create one that with some flexible dates in there, so we can kind of look at these, and then we will adopt that, that process, and to the best of my ability, I will put on there sort of some broad, sort of like, in these months, we'll be maybe doing this type of work, knowing that that would, I mean, that, I, I have a hard time adopting something that I know will potentially change a whole bunch, but I can put some sort of. Yeah.
Vince did send that, I sent it to Patty, just to send to the rest of the board at some point, so.
Perfect.
Um, because we only have one board meeting in March, do we think?
We have some money.
Do we think we could, um, hear a public comment, or would we like to see some in the interim?
So the idea is just a separate meeting just for that?
No, he's saying.
No, I'm just saying, have public comment be made available.
Well, certainly.
Like a second public comment section, you know, we've done that before.
Yeah, well, we've done, like, have we done for the investment?
Specifically for the interim.
Right, yeah, right, yes, just for the, just for the.
So, yes, if anybody can make public comment on Monday, and we should open up a space for anybody else to comment and make comment, but I would be hesitant to have that be the only time you can public comment, because it is only one week's notice. I would kind of like to extend that out to.
And I'll be.
That's because if not.
It'll be April eighth.
April eighth will be the first time we can have public comment, and we won't be able to then come back and adopt the qualifications until the following meeting, which we, most are towards the end of April. And then we're looking at maybe to.
Can we add a meeting for that public comment, so that we.
Well, not.
Can we add a section to a, yeah, like a work session that we're already having, can we open, start that early?
We have that, we're session on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
We're already meeting on the eighteenth.
Your comment.
Can we add a special meeting for public comment?
It's your. Eighteenth?
No. Real work session?
Well, we also have one on the eleventh, but that's the one that.
That's our meeting, that's the, that's, yeah, that's this meeting.
Oh, okay, well, I see that there's a work session on the eighteenth, on the eleventh.
Right, but we're just saying that, but to give people, right, that's, but that's what activated the question, because it's, if we add that, but it's not giving the public a lot of notice, and I think they would feel like, oh, you're, you're throwing this in, we didn't have time to kind of understand what that piece of the, even though this is for the.
It's not what they would say, it's just making sure to provide time.
Well, no, but I mean, I would feel that way, that, that's not a bad thing, I'm, people would feel like, and in some ways, kind of like, this was really short notice, and I'm not prepared, like, I didn't know this was happening, so that's not.
We're thinking maybe the eighteenth of, how common at the work session, can you do that?
That's what we were deciding.
We can, we can make it a public meeting, we can make it a regular meeting, we can have the work session that we've got planned, and then we can have a short.
It'd be seven thirty to eight.
Yeah, a short, regular session after, and hear public comment, and we can, even at that time, we could adopt it after. I mean, it, it feels a little awkward to have hearing public comment and then adopting, because it's going to be unlikely for them to have incorporated in that last round of public comments.
But then at least, even if we don't, by the eighth, we can adopt.
Yes.
So why don't we?
Or we could.
Always.
Do you public comment on, on the eleventh, the eleventh, the eighteenth?
The eighteen.
Add a short meeting on the eighteen.
Yeah, and add that special meeting, so that at the end of that meeting, we can, um, based on public comment from Monday as well as that other.
Yeah.
And here's the other thing we can do, we can have that meeting, short meeting on the eighteenth, if the public comment that we heard is pretty much in line with what we heard before, we can go ahead and adopt. If we hear something radical new, that we need time to chew over, we can table that item and then wait to.
And, and just being really clear in that piece of, in, as we let folks know about this, that this is for interim, and we will have the same process later for the full search, because I think that will be important as well.
Okay.
And if for some reason we need more time to chew on things, but want to get it moving faster, we could do just a special meeting on like April, even if it's virtual, April first, just to adopt the, if we need to do, for the qualities and qualifications, if we felt like it wasn't, we, we weren't incorporating what we had heard. Okay, so I will add, I'll talk with you.
Okay.
Do you want to call in, or is it just? But it'll be recorded, right?
Yeah.
So I can.
Yeah.
And it's actually a fine one, if this people listen, it's just to listen.
Yeah. It's just.
If you guys decide to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm a little unclear, so the eighteenth, we would be getting comments.
Actually, I'll, are we wanting, I'm sure, so maybe. Actually, are we wanting control, so maybe to organize?
She, she, I think you get comments on the 18th, we can table it until we're doing a, a small meeting or virtual meeting on the 1st, if you're saying.
Yeah, just to adopt the qualifications for the interim. Yeah.
Or, and then we don't, we're not rushing to, so you don't.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose if people come and they're in favor of what they've already heard on the 11th and what we have, again, knowing that this is for the interim, we, we would have that option, and I could amend the, you know, gender base one.
So we could notice that as, like, oh, and then, um, then if we feel like we don't have enough information, we could table that.
Only on the 18th?
Exactly.
Probably the 18th, 30 minutes from.
This is specifically about interim qualifications?
Yes.
So, well, we had talked about the 11th being too soon to really.
We're doing both.
So we'll do the 11th, and we could vote.
No, we're, we're, we're doing two on purpose. Yeah, yes.
Well, we might table it. During public comment on the 11th, during public comment on the 18th, maybe voting on the 18th, maybe table in that. That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yes. And if we get two hours of public comment and we have to, um, say, okay, I'm back this week, I'll have another round of public comment on the 1st.
So we have our paid working work session on the 18th?
It's like 3:30.
Do we wanna adjust that, just to get more attention within?
We need to have that conversation, so I think that should take, I think that's an important one to, to keep, and then we can, I mean, it might end early, certainly, although we wouldn't have public comment till there, so. Yeah. Never mind, so we would start the public comment at 7:30.
Um, since we've got people in the room, has anything we've said tonight seemed really out of line with what folks were hearing, or is it something that? Most here on their track, on their track, on their track, it takes a while to turn around. Take, and, and, so you can, you, please, what they want. But it's working forward, and we get trust of the, of the community, and we can really do things like this.
I appreciate the consideration for public comment in the risk, and maybe to their personal theories, but I think it's part of interim.
I think you wanna definitely be sure you clarify the difference between interim, because so many people will be thinking of the long term.
Yeah.
And it's interim, and interim meeting from here to here. And in the meantime, and then we will be crafting for the next.
Rolling this whole other process again, yeah, second time.
Yeah, and maybe we could reiterate that in the, um, in the agenda. We're talking about interim, and the interim role is generally to have like a, a. Generally, a.
Yeah.
A stable state.
Yeah.
The windows are closed right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, all right, anything else?
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will adjourn this work session of the Tiger Colton School District at 6:54.
Have a good evening.
Bye, Vince.
Thank you.
Bye.